I'll call the May 5, 2020, Common Council Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Andrew, would you start us off?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Just a reminder to anybody out there, we are socially distancing, so the various aldermen are spread out throughout the room, and one is Skyping in for us in the second district, so. Again, if you're wishing to call in, please register, and Kevin, our IT guy, will take care of us, take care of you in short order and give us a warning when you want to speak. The minutes of 4:06 and 4:30, 2020, we can take those separately, please.
Kurkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of April 6, 2020.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
In the minutes of 4:30, 20, if there's no omissions or errors, corrections?
Kurkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of April 30, 2020.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
First item of the night is a resolution to Kerry Kent. He's retiring from our DPW. And Catherine, when you're ready, would you please read that into the record?
Certainly. Resolution number 12150-050520, resolution of commendation to Kerry Kent. Whereas Kerry Kent began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on August 22, 1994, when he was hired as an equipment operator, and whereas on January 17, 2016, after our department reorganization, Kerry was promoted to equipment operator two. And whereas in 2015 Kerry received a merit award for his exceptional work as an operator and trainer of new employees, and whereas as part of that award, Kerry was recognized for being one of the department's best operators and having a number of areas in which he excelled. And whereas further noted in his award that due to his problem-solving skills, Kerry was often the department's first choice of employees when assigning a difficult or tricky task. And whereas Kerry was an effective and dependable employee during his years of service with the city of Oak Creek Department of Public Works, answering many calls for service from the community and providing immeasurable service to the community. And whereas effective April 30, 2020, Kerry is retiring from his position of equipment operator two with the city of Oak Creek Department of Public Works, completing over 25 of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Kerry and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Kerry Kent. Passed and adopted this 5th day of May, 2020.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Ted, do you have any words, comments for Kerry? I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, no, I can hear you, Mayor. We'll actually miss Kerry very much. It's unfortunate. He had to retire in this unusual time. I did speak to him on his last day, which was two weeks ago, and I told him, I apologize for not being able to have a little get-together and a cake and coffee for him, but I told him as soon as this flows over, we will definitely be doing that. We will miss Kerry. The things that Catherine read in his resolution are true. We always did depend on Kerry and give him some of the more difficult projects. We were fortunate enough to have him, and he was good enough to train some of our people so that we can carry on and continue to do some of the things that Kerry used to do while he was employed with the city.
Thank you, Ted. Anybody else? Comments for Kerry? Chris?
Alderman Guzekowski, 6th District. I just wanted to say I've had the pleasure of knowing Kerry on the side. He, his kids, he's got many, but some of his kids and mine were in band together, so we were band dads at the same time. So I spent a lot of time with him in various capacities. But the bottom line, too, this, last week, at the last council meeting, we mentioned, we were talking about one of our other proclamations that you had about how many good people we have here in the salt of the earth, people we have in Oak Creek. I mean, this Kerry is the salt of the earth, and we're going to miss the tribal knowledge that he's going to take with him, but we also know that he entrusted that to pass it on to his coworkers and colleagues. And the guy, bottom line is, he's a man of faith, and he truly believes in God, so congrats to him and good luck.
Thank you, Chris. Well said. A lot of my comments were taken up there. Again, you know, to the general public, you don't pay attention a lot to what the DPW does until it's not done, and then all of a sudden it becomes an issue. And it's people like Kerry and the men and women that work down there that really keep this city in the shape it's in, in all sorts of weather, rain, snow, ice, heat, you name it, they keep our city really humming. So on behalf of the common council and myself, I want to wish Kerry and his family a long, happy retirement. Ted kind of said it best. We're in this very strange time, and it's a strange time to retire. But again, we hope you're safe at home, you're practicing your social distancing, and when we get back to the new normal, what that is, we will definitely celebrate because you'll always be part of the Oak Creek family. So again, congratulations, Kerry. Motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to approve resolution 12150-050520, a resolution of commendation to Kerry Kent, retiring DPW equipment operator two.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item five is a mayoral proclamation for congratulations to Lois Parker on her 100th birthday. We have yet another centurion in Oak Creek, so Catherine, if you would.
Longevity. Certainly. Mayoral proclamation. Congratulations to Lois A. Parker on her 100th birthday. Whereas Lois Parker was born on May 18, 1920, in Racine, Wisconsin, to John Seeger and Petra Jorgensen, and whereas Lois had one sister, Onji, and whereas Lois met her husband Edward when a friend set her up on a blind date with him, and on July 17, 1954, they were united in marriage. And whereas Lois, in addition to working as an assistant to doctors, also ran the Parkway Bar and Restaurant on the corner of Gold Street and North Main Street, where the Racine Zoo is currently located, and was known to have the best fish fry in Racine. And whereas at the Parkway Bar and Restaurant, Lois was also known as the hostess with the mostess. And whereas Lois and Ed had two children, Gary and Corinne, four grandchildren, Kimberly, John, Brianna, and Ray, and two great-grandchildren, Leonardo and Alma. And whereas during her free time, Lois enjoyed partaking in her hobbies, especially tennis and swimming. And whereas Lois Parker will be 100 years young on Monday, May 18, 2020, a celebration in honor of Lois will be held at her residence, Meadowmere Oak Creek Senior Living Community. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of the city of Oak Creek hereby congratulates Lois Parker on her milestone 100th birthday. Be it further resolved that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy of this proclamation to Lois Parker dated this 18th day of May, 2020.
Thank you, Catherine. Any well wishes for Lois from the council? Chris?
One thing from me, Alderman, Guzekowski, 6th District. My lion's capacity, we go Christmas caroling here, and we've had the opportunity to meet many of these residents, and we've met Lois. She would come out and enjoy the songs and listen to the Christmas carol, talk about her treasure. Boy, she's really nice.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have not had the pleasure to meet Lois, but I'm looking forward to it. Once all the restrictions are lifted, the clerk and I typically go out and celebrate the 100th birthday of these centurions we have in Oak Creek, and we have a number of them. There must be something in the water here.
There's something.
That high-quality water in Oak Creek. But again, happy birthday to Lois, and again, we wish you well, and look forward to meeting you soon as the restrictions are lifted, so. No motion needed on that one, so we will move right into our informational in item six, and that's a COVID-19 update, and we have Darcy with us tonight.
Good evening. Darcy DeBois, Health Officer with the city of Oak Creek. As of today, we had 96 positive cases of COVID-19 among Oak Creek residents. We've had 519 negative test results. We've had 11 deaths among Oak Creek residents, and 48 of the individuals who tested positive have, are now recovered or have been released from their isolation period. We have, we are seeing about a 16% positivity rate in our, in the testing of Oak Creek residents. That's about the same as what we see across Milwaukee County. Across the state of Wisconsin, about 9% of individuals who are tested, test positive. Ideally, we'd like to see between 5 and 10% test positive out of the total number. That's really an indicator that we're doing enough testing, and we've reached that threshold of testing enough people. So the good news is we are seeing testing ramp up in this area. Most of the healthcare systems are now doing quite a bit more testing, as well as the federally qualified health centers are all doing testing. And individuals who are both affiliated with those clinics or healthcare systems and who do not have a primary care doctor are now able to get tested. So we do expect to continue to see an increased number of tests. 34% of individuals in Oak Creek who test positive are hospitalized at some point during their illness. And we've seen about 16% of our cases in healthcare workers who live in the city of Oak Creek. 59% of our cases here in Oak Creek have been associated with an outbreak, either in a workplace or a long-term care facility. And 40% of positive cases are affiliated specifically with an outbreak in a long-term care facility. That is not unique to Oak Creek. We're seeing across the state outbreaks in many long-term care facilities or large workplaces. We've heard a lot about those in the news. It can be hard to stop the spread once a couple of cases, a couple of people test positive in one of those locations. I continue to have daily calls with the other Milwaukee County health officers, as well as with the state health department, to really facilitate collaboration and information sharing across health departments. And we do continue to work with the hospital systems and other community partners to really move towards that phased reopening that we've heard about. As you all know, we're currently waiting on a decision from the Supreme Court regarding safer at home. Milwaukee County health officers have been discussing a potential local response and criteria for reopening on a local level. We're not yet sure if we'll need to make any of those decisions on a local level. That really depends on the decision that comes down later this week or in the next week or so. If the order ends up being overturned or altered, the specifics of that Supreme Court decision will really guide our next steps. We won't know until we see that decision, how it might impact a health officer's ability to implement an order at a local level. We are really trying to focus on data-driven decisions so that we know when it's safe and our community is ready to move forward. And if we did need to make any decisions at a local level, my intent would be to bring any recommendations to the council before moving forward. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions for Darcy?
Mayor, I just have comments. It may be a question in there somewhere.
Go ahead, Steve.
Alderman Kurkowski, 1st District. Darcy, I know it goes without saying, but you know, when people jump on this pandemic bandwagon and we've got, you know, one-size-fits-all response to what's going on versus being objective and looking at individual, either counties or communities, it goes without saying, but it isn't said, that the more tests we conduct, the more positive cases we're going to have. So I'd like to see more emphasis on the fact that we're testing more people, so we're going to get more positive results. I mean, if we stopped testing, we'd be flatlined because nobody would know anything. So sometimes I just think the information we get isn't complete, or it's subjective, or it's slanted, or whatever the case may be, because now that we've been at this for a month or so, and we literally don't have a end game here because we either got this badger bounce-back thing, or whatever the case may be, you got, car dealerships are going to start reopening their sales area. And I think that's a legitimate move because now we know how to control social distancing, or we can face-to-face contact with sales. But it leads me to the fact that I think, I think with certain, with thinking about it, I think we can reopen City Hall, and not to meetings and stuff like that, but I think we can allow people to come in here and conduct business at the counter, and you put those plastic shields, and even get less of, less foot traffic at water and sewer, and even get less at the streets department. It's just, I think it shows the public that we're moving forward to an end game here and not just living in this vacuum of sitting in the house and not doing anything, because people in our neighborhood where I live, they're socializing, they're walking around, they're talking to neighbors, friends are coming over, they're visiting and stuff like that. We need to start showing a little bit of proactive with regards to getting our life back to normal instead of just sitting around and doing the same thing day after day after day. And if we can do, just take some baby steps, it just might make people feel a little better. It's, like I said, it's not a, there's no question in there, but it's more of a comment.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Anything for Darcy? Chris?
Alderman Guzekowski. I just have a question on some of the data here. So we had, we've had 11 deaths, Darcy?
That's correct.
And then we have 90-plus positive, test positivity tests, you said?
Yes, we do.
Okay. So, and all the, all these numbers that we're putting out there, how many of these are from nursing homes or assisted-living homes versus households?
So 40% of our positive cases, people who have tested positive, are associated with a long-term care facility. So that could be either residents of a long-term care facility or staff, people who work in a long-term care facility. So certainly a large number.
Okay, so 40%, okay.
Yeah.
And then you also mentioned a percentage, like, what was the other percentage about healthcare workers?
Yes. Yep. 16% of individuals who have tested positive are healthcare workers. So that's not necessarily in an Oak Creek facility. They could be a healthcare worker in a clinic, or a hospital, or a long-term care facility in the region.
Okay. Right. Thank you, Darcy.
Sure.
Andrew?
Just to, just to highlight, or maybe add on to Alderman Kurkowski's comments, we, we kind of are now in that phase where we're beginning to think about as a staff, reopening the government, if you will, City Hall and the facilities. We've been in this period of trying to get on top and really reactive mode, and now I think we're in a period, whether it be the city facilities or with whatever comes down from the Supreme Court decision, you and the public health staff and the city staff will have some real interesting discussions on what that looks like for the city of Oak Creek and Milwaukee County in terms of reopening, kind of in the external facing, and you know, allowing and guiding and giving some direction to our businesses. So we are beginning Thursday. I put out a little outline for our large leadership team on Thursday. We are going to be getting, begin to talk about, over the next two or three weeks or whatever that timeline is, deliberately opening up, you know, facilities and things like that. This is just me talking right now. I like to get input from the staff, of course, and we'll forward that plan once we arrive at one to the council for input as well. But a lot, a lot is pivoting on the Supreme Court case. And whether you agree with the badger bounce-back plan or not, one thing that that has provided local governments is at least a standard. And of course, you've seen around the state, local governing bodies have certain opinions about those standards and they're following them or not, but it at least is something in place. If the Supreme Court falls the way of, the order is, you know, thrown out the window, or whatever, whatever we learn from that decision is going to be, again, pivotal on your decisions moving forward. So again, that's the external side of it. What do we do with the order when whatever happens to the order happens? But we're also focusing on the city operations itself and determining how we can deliberately get back to kind of, not, not full-throat, full-bore, open to public traffic and those types of things, but, you know, I guess phasing in, you know, what we've, what we've done to protect our workforce and the public so far.
Exactly. And small steps, and good examples of it is the curbside pickup at the library and the dump opened recently. So as we can protect our employees as best as possible and still provide public service, we'll move along. There's a lot of moving pieces to this, legal pieces, interpretation pieces. It's complicated. I mean, we're all aware of that, and we've asked a lot of patients of our residents. And again, it's for the common good of all, and I think everybody's doing a pretty good job of it for the most part. Again, the numbers, I asked kind of the same question along Steve's line a few days back in EOC, and I was told they, they kind of spin these numbers all over the place, percentage-wise, with what's being tested and things of that nature, too. So people with far more knowledge, experience in the field are helping drive that data. And again, I talked to one resident, and they, there was discussions about why playgrounds aren't open. And we had that discussion. And again, kids can be carriers, and it's known that this stuff can linger, and we don't have the capacity to clean that stuff up daily every time somebody comes, and we can't count on people to clean up by themselves. So the greatest good was to keep them closed for the time being until we figure it out. So that's kind of where we sit. It's not a fun place to be, but it's the fact of the matter, it's where we're at, so. Again, a lot of work's been done between our protective services, health department, DPW, City Hall staff, city attorney. A lot of tired eyes out there lately in City Hall. So it may not seem like everybody's, you know, really, really knocking it over, and we're moving at light speed, but work is being done. Financially speaking, it's a whale of a job keeping track of all this stuff, too, from our finance department, so.
Mayor, perhaps let me have an opportunity to ask Ted how things were going at the, at the yard there since it's been reopened. I know it's still under the COVID-19 update, I guess. Can Ted hear me?
Sure. Actually, they're going fairly well. We're prepared for the amount of people that were coming in. We put a couple extra employees there, you know, made a few modifications to like the traffic pattern and that, and I think that it is going fairly well.
Be here. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
Darcy, as long as I got you in front and center here, just a question for you on the, on the testing and the positivity ratio, that's kind of an oddball, actually. It's kind of counterintuitive, the way the governor wants to use it. I mean, we continue to focus on a, you know, declining positivity rate, but it seems as though the, we're still, in terms of testing, we're still only testing folks we think actually are sick. So I mean, they expect it to go down in that case, it's kind of, so are you aware of any actually randomized testing that someone's going to open up, or one of the healthcare facilities will be actually just doing drive-up randomized testing to, you know, kind of get a true picture? Are we still focusing on folks who are symptomatic, who have already been pre-screened and get an appointment? Because that's, otherwise, that's kind of, that's kind of silly to have that as a component of any kind of really, it's counterintuitive, and it's kind of, I think, not very forthright for that to be part of our review. And in fact, you still only screen folks you think are sick. That's, it really doesn't get us very far in terms of, you know, really kind of figuring out what's going on in the community. So just in general, do you know of any kind of, just truly randomized screening that's going to be happening anytime soon?
So as of right now, you're correct, that there's still, the goal is, the push is to test of all symptomatic individuals, and certainly we're seeing a lot of those people who are sick test negative. So there's, you know, we know there are still some other respiratory illnesses in the community. They are moving towards starting to do some mass testing across some of the long-term care facilities to get a better idea of what's going on there. And certainly, we've seen some of the larger workplaces that have had some outbreaks where they're doing mass testing of everyone, whether they're symptomatic or not. You know, I think that as we continue to have more capacity for testing, we might see some of what you're talking about where they're doing, you know, some testing of asymptomatic people to get an idea, just, you know, right, how many people are testing positive or not. One thing I will add, though, is that what we're, what we are seeing is as they're doing testing of some of these facilities where they do mass testing of everyone symptomatic or not, is that we are seeing, you know, a fair number of people who are completely asymptomatic testing positive as well, which is something that I think we didn't really expect. And I think that's been surprising to see people who aren't having any symptoms test positive. So, you know, that's also telling us more about how someone who's asymptomatic, or how the disease is spreading, if people don't even know they're sick, that they wouldn't alter their activity, and then we can see spread of disease, you know, which is, again, a good reason that we're promoting the, the physical distancing when people are out and about.
I mean, I get the point of testing the health, the long-term care facilities. I mean, you go where your problems are. I mean, that's perfectly logical. I'm just telling, I'm just saying that as a, as a sort of a benchmark in the whole badger bounce-back as a declining positivity rate, if you continue to focus on folks you think are sick, you are not going to get a declining positivity. So it's a falsehood, right, right up front. So that's, I'm just wondering when in fact someone will have the fortitude to actually demand some random testing and get a true vision of what's going on, so.
Darcy, if I may, Mayor, I think what, and I don't think this is going to aid in the argument, Ken, that you're making or anything like that, or dispel it, but, because I do agree with that. But I think what the idea of getting down to that 5% to 10% of positive cases means that you've had capacity, you've added the capacity needed in testing, and that's based on aggregate data, if you track it around probably the world, how it comes about 5% to 10% of people, if you have adequate testing, test positive. So I think that that data is normalized because as this has spread around the country, asymptomatic people weren't tested, you know, so I don't, I don't know that I'm lending that it's a valid statistic by any means, but I think it's, might be trying to measure, measure different things other than just, you know, positivity, and I know you know that. But it means, I think, we've got to an adequate testing capacity where if we're down to that 5% to 10%, as in the rest of the world, asymptomatic people, people were not probably symptomatic and just chose, well, it's not that bad, I'll just ride it out a couple days and not go get a test. I think that 5% to 10% attempts to normalize the behaviors of people, whether they're symptomatic or asymptomatic. True, false? No comment?
Thank you. Alderman Lorik, anything? I don't mean, uh...
No, thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comments, we'll move on to item seven. Thank you, Darcy. Keep up the work, the good work. Item, item seven, an old business, this was held over from last meeting. These are mayoral appointments as made. So in item seven, small claims will be Alderman Dukenyak of the 3rd District. Library board will be Alderman Lorik of the 2nd District. Questions, comments? Nope, seeing none. We'll move on to eight. This will require a motion. And these are mayoral, aldermatic appointments. Item A, Water and Sewer Utility, it'll be Commissioner Gail in the 5th District. Landscape and Beautification Committee, Alderman Guzekowski in the 6th District. Tourism Commission, Alderman Gail of the 5th District. And item D, Community Development Authority, it'll be Alderman Kurkowski of the 1st and Alderman Gail of the 5th. So if there's any questions, comments, if none, motion, please.
Gail will move to concur with the following, with the mayoral appointments as listed.
Guzekowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item nine is the common council president, president appointments. No motion is needed, but we do have a resident wishing to comment on one of the appointments. So Kevin, would you like to put the resident on, please?
She actually did not make it on.
Oh, she did not make it on. Apologize to that resident. If you'd like to call me tomorrow and discuss it, or the council president, please feel free. Sorry about the disconnection. Alderman Gail, your appointments, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Very straightforward. Unchanged from last year's appointments. Highlights, personal committee, that's Alderman... Highlights, personnel committee, that's Alderman-Stoman, Gale and Dukenyak with Toman the chair, capital improvements. Gale with Guzikowski as chair, Toman licensed, Kirkowski as chair with Gale and Dukenyak. Plan commission, Guzikowski and Lorick. Board of health, Alderman-Kirkowski, emergency government, Alderman-Kirkowski, Parks and Rec, Alderman-Guzikowski, traffic and safety, the always popular traffic and safety appointment. Alderman-Dukniak and the finance committee, Gale, Gail, Toman and Lorick on that as well.
None? Okay. No, no motion required on that. We'll get us to item 10, informational. It's a summarized treasures report. If everybody, please take a look for the banking accounts for the month ending March 31st. If you have any questions, I don't believe, oh, we do have Barb with us, there you are. We do have Barb with us and they can be directed to Barb. How you doing, Barb?
I'm good. How are you?
Good.
All right. As Mayor mentioned, it's the treasury report on investment and banking, month ending March 31st, 2020. Our beginning balance was $54,895,751.91. Ending balance, $50,154,611.27. Our interest earned was $76,732.88. The difference between beginning and ending balance was a negative $4,741,140.64. Some of the larger activity that took place during the month was, tax collection was just over 4.4 million. And we did pay out some debt service payments of just under 7 million.
Hey, thank you, Barb. Questions for Barb? Nothing. All the arithmetic was right, so I think we're good. That was just informational. Thank you, Barb. Stay safe. Nice seeing you again.
She's up next, Dan.
Yeah, she's up again. Item 11, consideration of a motion to authorize publication and write-off of the 2018 delinquent personal property taxes. Barb?
Thank you, Mayor. Each year I come to you questioning publication and write-off of delinquent personal property tax from the prior year. In this case, it's the 2018 tax year. So this year we have, we're requesting to, for publication, $5,514.07. And to be approved for removal of the general account, which is just an accounting thing. We have $2,537.41. I've included several documents as backup for you to take a look at, including the list of, of all those for publication and write-off. And just to note, of course, we'll continue with our collection effort. So, any question?
Questions for Barb? No. Does seem like the list got shorter. Very good. Okay. Steve?
Thank you. Alderman-Kirkowski, first district. Barb, I, I may have asked this question last year, so forgive me if it's redundant, but of some of the companies here on the list that might still be in business, is there a way, if they're licensed in any way, shape or form, or inspections, that they have to have an inspection before they get a license? Is there a way to hold those licenses? And I, I know we, in the license committee, we often see that we approve liquor licenses pending, you know, inspection or payment of delinquent taxes, something like that. But these don't fit the liquor license category. So I mean, if, I'm not going to name names, but I see a couple of them are still in business. But doesn't the sanitarium have access to saying, well, we can't give you this occupancy permit or whatever it is until you pay your back taxes?
Well, occupancy would already be in place for businesses. So really the only ones that we can look at are, as you mentioned, a liquor license or a health license. Some of these, it may be the case of a new owner has taken over and we cannot withhold a new owner's license from a previous business owner. So you may be seeing some of those. Otherwise, we do work with the, with the sanitarium on taking care of all of those bills before the taxes before issuing licenses to them.
If 2021 comes around and I ask the same question, feel free to remind me that I asked this already, okay? Thank you.
No worries.
Any other questions for Barb? Okay. Motion on 11, please.
It will move to authorize the publication and write-off of the 2018 delinquent personal property tax per the attached reports.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 12 is engineering and its consideration of a resolution approving the Creekside Crossing Marketplace Phase Two Development Agreement with Walden OCLLC for the design, construction of public improvements for the development at various lots on IKEA Way in the second district. Mike, you're with us. There you are.
Thanks, Mayor. So, did anybody hear me? Okay, good. So yes, this is, I guess, just the continued development of the Creekside Crossing Marketplace that of course is a development that's in the vicinity of IKEA Way and Drexel Avenue, south of the IKEA store, fronting right on Drexel. And we did have a development agreement that we entered into them, which I guess we would term that phase one of the, of the development of the site. And that entail all the, of the public infrastructure, which was utility laterals connecting to the existing mains and basic public streets, and then a connection, an entrance off of Drexel Avenue and the main entrance off of IKEA Way, which, which makes it way, way into the development. And then at that intersection with IKEA Way and that, and that roadway, which is Creekside Circle, road name if I'm correct, traffic signals. And so those improvements are largely complete, a little bit of work yet on those. So that development agreement is not quite ready to close out. However, we have phase two now, and this became necessary as the, the sites within the development came, became a little more clear. They were able to really nail down where that central road was going to be constructed. And then all the utilities, of course, follow along that corridor. And so those plans are, those plans are in fairly good shape. And although we have not seen them in their final version yet, those are with their design engineer at this point. But at any rate, that is that main road. And Andrew will remind you that we have our first roundabout in the city as part of, of that road network, which, which is great. And it's street lighting and sewer water, basically everything that's needed to sort of those, those developing sites. And, and so we hammered out the agreement with the developer and there was a little bit of, of back and forth, but we got it done. And this basically just outlines the rules, regulations, and all the procedures that, that they need to follow in the design and in the construction. And then we're going to be doing the inspection of all that infrastructure as it goes on. And the developer is responsible for that, for funding those efforts. Any questions?
Questions for Mike?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Greg.
Alderman-Lorick, second district. I have no concerns. Obviously this is required for the development to keep going, but do they have an estimated start and end date for this construction?
What I have heard is, what I have heard is about the time that we would see them firing up on, on, on these improvements. And it's, it's a lot of work, but it's not, it's not insurmountable to get done in one construction season. I would expect that, that, you know, it would probably take the full construction season, but, but they would be wrapping things up here in the fall.
Okay. Thank you.
What else? Seeing none, motion please.
Lorick will move that the common council adopt resolution number 12156-050520, approving the Creekside Crossing Marketplace Phase Two Development Agreement with Walden OCLLC for the design and construction of public, public improvements for the development located at 7,700 south IKEA Way.
Next, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Item 13 is consider a motion to award the private property infiltration inflow Phase Two lateral inspection unit price contract to Green Bay Pipe and TV LLC at an estimated cost of $12,740. Michael?
Thanks, Mayor. And so, yes, this is, also might recall last year that we did the phase one. There, there was two areas within that neighborhood in Oakview subdivision, and we took care of the east area first, always with the intention of taking care of the, the, the area to the west of, of that group this year. So here we are doing that. Couple of things, last year we did the, we did the televising, this is what we're talking about here, the televising inspection of laterals. Companies that are specialized in this work, they shoot a camera and they, and they trolley it right up the, right up the sewer and up the lateral to get a good glimpse on what is the extent of repairs that are needed on all of these. But at any rate, so that work was done on, on the east group last year. And then we did, we did design on where it was appropriate on those lateral. And then, but that workout for bid did not go because there were some regularities in the bid. And there were some concerns on some of the work that was, that had been done in the whole region on these projects. That's the lining of the lateral. So we took a pause on that and again, the bids were, were out of whack. So we were not going to be able to proceed. Always with the intention though, that we will be back this year doing that second group. And, and, and here we are. So we're asking that, the low bidder here, Green Bay Pipe and TV, that they, they be aware of this work. Can proceed, get their work done. That goes back to the consultants that we're working with. They will review all of that and then design the west group, group two, with the overall intent and group one and group two would be, go back out to bid here this year yet for construction and repairs on both the groups, both groups one and two at the same time. So, long story, but we really just want to spend the, the $13,000 now to get the laterals looked at thoroughly.
Thank you, Mike. Questions for Mike? Mike?
Yeah, Alderman, Mike, Toman, Mike. What, what kind of problems did you, just in general, did you discover out there last year? Was it quite extensive or?
Uh, yeah, there, there's, there, there is some, I mean, we've got misaligned pipes, we've got broken pipes. Of course, we, there, there's tree roots that have, have gotten into, in some of these laterals and, and, and caused fractures. And, you know, we knew that this was a suspect area based on the calls that come in when we get the rains out there, that there's a lot of inflow into these, into the pipes and infiltration. And, and that's really from the observations of the Oak Creek Water Supply Utility, because that's where those calls all go. And so that's where we concentrated on, we did some flow monitoring before this whole project started in some of those areas. And we were able to confirm that, that, that these areas would, would be a good candidate for, for this project. Again, this is funded through, funded through the city, but 100% reimbursed through MMSD. So good benefits all around. But yeah, you know, some, some pretty obvious repairs need to happen out there.
Okay.
I see. Reports of some, some sinkholes even out there. So I mean.
Okay.
Pipes are failing in some.
Okay. I see the inspection costs are reimbursable, MMSD, right?
Yes.
According to the, okay. Once the problem is discovered and these are on private property laterals, what happens? Is that private property expense at that point?
Uh, no, really. It is 100% covered by MMSD.
Is, okay.
All right. I mean, they saw, the, the property owners, you know, they sign a waiver allowing us to do the inspections. They, they sign a, a waiver allowing us on the property, doing repair work. And so they're all on board. You know, we send letters out to everybody. We got a pretty good response. About 70% of the people responded saying, yeah, come and take a look at my lateral. And of those, you know, probably, you know, 65%, maybe, you know, two thirds of those will actually warrant some work being done on them. So it's, it's a, it's a good opportunity for these people to get their.
I agree.
And it's really not costing them anything. Yes, they will be inconvenienced as, as anybody is when there's construction in their front yard, but it's a trade-off.
Hey, thank you.
Ken?
Yeah, Mike, I, I think I heard you right. I think you said you, either you or me, MMSD, had some problems with some of the quality of the work that was done last season?
Yeah. Not, not in Oak Creek, but in the region, they had, they were, they were having some, some issues with, with the way the laterals were being repaired. And the vast majority of the repairs were a system of bringing in a sleeve that, that they pull it in and then they, they, they superheat it with boiling water and, and the chemicals that are in there. And it basically puts a layer on the interior wall of the lateral. But then what they always, they always have to be careful of is if things aren't ideal, you know, if that liner fails, it's just going to kind of sag back into the pipe and then you got, then you have a big problem. So they are kind of working through quality control and all of that. And so this year, I mean, we are looking at a different type of repair. We are really looking primarily at digging up laterals. So it's going to be, going to be a little more on the properties. But we have let everybody know that ahead of time.
Same contractor, different contractor or?
It's going to go out for public bid once we have the, yeah, once we have the, the homes identified.
All right. Other questions for Mike? Okay. Seeing none, motion on 13.
I'm going to make a motion to award the private property infiltration and inflow Phase Two lateral inspection unit price contract to Green Bay Pipe and TV LLC at the estimated cost of $12,740. Project number 18035.
Kirkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
And item 14 is license committee. I will turn that over to Alderman-Kirkowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume everybody's had an opportunity to review the license committee report for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any questions, cares or concerns? All right. Seeing none, Kirkowski make a motion to approve the various license, I'm sorry, motion to grant the various license requests listed on the May 5th, 2020 license committee report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item 15 is our vendor summary report. Please take a look at it and direct your questions to Bridget, who's with us tonight. She should be able to answer just about all of it. If not, I think Mike's still on the line. He can handle some as well. I guess I'll direct this one at Mike. Mike, just item four is door master garage door for station one under repair. Was that, was that? door for Station 1 under repair. Was that, was that ever right from the construction? They've always had problems with those doors, haven't they? Or am I thinking about the wrong doors? And I don't even know if, but you're the right guy to ask.
Station three.
I'm not sure that I'm like.
Well, yeah, the new ones have always been bad, too.
Probably, if, 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 if this isn't Mike Kreslik that you're looking for, Mayor, if you're, if you're asking Mike Simmons, then you probably do the wrong. But I, but I do recall this conversation that they've been, they've been kind of grappling with these, with these doors, that they're, they're not, you know, not opening quick enough, or they're, they've got pieces that are failing on them. So the building's only four years old, so.
Yeah, and I just, I just remember the talk that they haven't been operating the way they should have from the get-go. I just, I don't know.
That it, was that, that was originally, is that something that Chamberlain should have caught, or is that some, or, no?
Who paid him for?
Bridget, Bridget, do you want to chime in on that?
Sure.
Open up a can of worms.
I am trying to see, but unfortunately, my electronic report right now for vendor summary is cut off. And I was hoping to see a CIP number, because I know that there were a couple of requests that were approved in the 2020 budget for the CIP. So I think this is one of them. I think, yes, it is part of some of the coiling system that has not been operating quite as well as we wanted it to.
And I know the ship kind of sailed on Chamberlain and everybody else. It's just a shame. So. Any other questions for Bridget, or Mike? Greg, anything?
No, I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Seeing none. Motion on 15.
It will move to approve the April 29, 2020 vendor summary report in the total amount of $294,740.54.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
And item 16 is consideration of a motion to convene in to close session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A, section 19.85, sub 1, sub C, to discuss the performance goals for the city administrator. President Gale?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, move to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the following. A, section 19.85, sub 1, sub C, to discuss the performance goals for the city administrator.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Yack.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
We will now convene into closed session and resume at its conclusion. Now convene into open session. Motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale moves to convene, reconvene in open session.
Guzikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 18 is consideration to take action if needed. None is required, so let's go to adjournment, please.
Kirkowski make a motion to adjourn.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzikowski.
Aye.
Thank you all for those that tuned in and streamed us. Again, please follow the CDC guidelines, our city health officials guidelines of social distancing. Wear your mask. And please, if possible, patronize a local business. Together, we can get through. Thank you. Good night.